We will begin today's meeting of the, oh, sorry. I didn't realize Melinda was still up there. We'll begin today's meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Everyone could please rise. We'll, uh, I'll lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'll by my own side. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will start today's meeting with Item 1, Board of Supervisors Matters, and we'll go to Supervisor Shucklian.
Very much, Mr. Chair. Last Wednesday after, the day after our last, whoa, okay, can you hear me now? We had our Public Arts Committee meeting, Supervisor Valero and myself and some staff members, and as you know, we have an art installation right now at Government Plaza, and our next project is right here in our chambers in A and B and in the lobby areas. So very excited about some things that we talked about there to put more public art in our government places. Friday morning, I did the CSAC Institute Welcome at the PDC to an overflow crowd. Once again, it was nice to see all our Tulare County folks there, but there were also people, I can't remember, I think there was Plumas County and a few others, so it's nice for them to come down and see what Tulare County is all about. Sunday, I spent most of the afternoon at the Old Sons of Italy Hall. Many of you may have seen, if you drive down Goshen Avenue, it's been remodeled into a venue called Bellevita, but they continue to hold Sons of Italy events there, and I presented a proclamation for Italian Heritage Month. And then yesterday, we had our TCAG meeting in the, in beautiful, it wasn't downtown Lindsay, but it was the outskirts of Lindsay. And then last night, I did a little presentation to about 12 kindergarten through third grade Girl Scouts at Blue Oak Academy, and so that was a nice little thing, and, ooh, I'm too old to be around little kids. So, that's all I have to say. If you ever want me to babysit your kids, no.
How about dogs?
Dogs, absolutely.
Okay, very good. Supervisor Valero?
All right. Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, good morning. It's a beautiful Tuesday, and as we can tell, the weather is changing. I absolutely love the fall and winter seasons. So our Northern Tulare County Water Alliance meeting was held last week and was helpful and encouraging, as we will continue to work with the state on a scope that meets their needs while continuing to press for our regional project, in addition to walking alongside of and keeping temperature of Cutler's and Orocy Surface Water Treatment Project. I won't reiterate what Supervisor Shucklian said about our Public Art Selection Committee meeting, however, I will continue to give kudos to her for highlighting and encouraging local youth talent in our spaces as well. Kudos to our staff in the office. Our Chief of Staff did an awesome job representing our county at the Alta Hospital Board Meeting on Saturday. This is what one of the board members sent me after the meeting. Hey, Eddie, compliments to your Chief of Staff. She did an outstanding job in her participation, ideas, and problem solving. Just wanted to let you know, thank you, and have a great weekend. And then she also represented us well during our meeting with the State Director for Senator Harris's office, where we talked about the pressing issues facing our valley. On Thursday, I also had the opportunity to talk with the Community Development Liaison and School Counselor for Learn for Life, a charter school out on Main Street here in Visalia. They are eager to get involved in the county and to engage their youth in project programs and potential internships. Learn for Life works with great students who have faced hardship along their journey. Hashtag Lead Interviews were also on Thursday in Dinuba, and they went very well. Applications doubled this year in that community with a little over 60 students interviewing, and so only 30 to 35 will be selected for the program, but nonetheless, it was a great day of interviewing. This weekend, I had the opportunity to train and facilitate Leadership Northern Tulare County, a weekend filled with team building, leadership development, and program implementation. It is always great to lead up the next generation of community members who are hungry for improvement, skill set forming, and creating community. I also attended a Law Library meeting yesterday with the goal of making structural and design improvements to the public law library. I'm excited to participate in the Cutler Elementary Lights and Sirens Event on Thursday, and that will be right before heading up north to attend the San Joaquin Valley Regional Association of California Counties Conference. I also look forward to my mobile office hours in Dinuba on Monday, October 28th, along with the TCO Excellence in Education Awards that same day, and then also Yedam and Seville Town Hall at the end of the month. I will also be attending the two-day LAFCO Conference in Sacramento. I serve as an alternate on LAFCO, and that event, and that conference will be on October 30th and 31st. And then that Saturday, I will attend the Hands in the Community Celebration at the Visalia Convention Center, and that is all I have.
Very good. Supervisor Vanderpool?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm having a little bit of technical difficulties, so I don't have my notes in front of me here today, so I will do the best I can going through my calendar real quick and just highlighting some public meetings that are taking place this week. I want to let everyone know, the Tulare County Retirement Board will be having their meeting tomorrow at 8:30 at the Cesara Chambers. Thursday and Friday, the San Joaquin Valley Regional Association of California Counties will be having their annual conference. This is hosted by the County of Stanislaus, and it's in Modesto, so look forward to traveling to beautiful Modesto for a conference. Then also wanted to highlight, looking into next week, I, on Monday evening, there is a great event every year in Tulare that benefits the Tulare Historical Museum and Historical Society, and that's the Taste Treats Event. That's their annual fundraiser. All the local restaurants come out and provide bits of their food, and there's a couple of local bartenders, myself included, that pour wine and serve beer during the event. That's always a good time, and it doesn't work like a typical event that Amy goes to, you know, where you drinks, you take a drink, you pour a drink, take a drink, pour a drink. I don't get to do that kind of fun stuff, so, that's too bad. Then Tuesday, the 29th, next week, the Tulare County Office of Education will be having their annual awards breakfast. I want to congratulate all of the honorees, the award winners, various teachers, administrators, and school employees throughout the county on their tremendous achievements, and congratulate them for that award. I will not be able to attend that event, however, because I will be traveling to Santa Ana. You know, when I talk about beautiful Modesto, let's talk about beautiful Santa Ana for San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority mediation and get to spend all day down there. Next Wednesday, at 2:00 PM, the Tipton Medical Clinic will be having an open house event from 2:00 to 4:00, showcasing their new facility there, recently remodeled. And then on 31st, on the 31st, I know it's Halloween, which is like a national holiday in my household with three kids under the age of five. It's also a national holiday anyways, but they're, they very much are very excited. But I will be speaking at the Tipton Ribbon Cutting for Caltrans and Highway 190. Look forward to that event. Should be well-attended. It's a big inconvenience having that project being done right now, but I think when it's all said and done, residents in the South County will be very happy with the results. Let's see. And then on to, what else did I have that I wanted to make mention of? All right, that's pretty much it, except for typical iPhone holidays that show up on your calendar, so that was what I wanted to mention between now and our next board meeting, and I hope everyone has a great and safe Halloween.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Supervisor Townsend?
All right, thank you. Well, on Thursday, we traveled out to Terabella for a town hall Thursday evening, and it was pretty well-attended out there, and had a good time updating everyone. Thank you to all the, all the department heads and staff that were able to come out and help out with that. Thank you especially to Carrie for setting it all up. Yeah, and I don't think Letty's here, but Letty for coming out and doing some, some translation out there, so that came out really well. And then Friday, Chairman Crocker came over to Porterville, and the two of us met with some Forest Service representatives there, talking about just forest management, general forest health, tree mortality, some plans for the future, and so we'll be following up those meetings shortly here in this next month. And Saturday and Sunday was the Apple Festival up in Springville, and so it was a beautiful weekend. It was really a postcard weekend to be up in the foothills, and lots of people showed up in Springville, and of course, I had to be the apple pie judge, and so that was tough duty, but I was able to get through it, and so looking forward already to next year. And then, of course, Monday, we had our TCAG meeting out in Lindsay yesterday, and then that evening, went out for rehearsal at Buckshaefer Auditorium in Porterville. We're having the annual Miss Porterville Veterans Homecoming Queen Pageant will be coming up Saturday, and they've asked me to emcee the event, so we had our rehearsal last night. If you're ever, you know, worried about the youth that are coming up, you start looking back and going, what's happening to the youth? You need to go to one of these type of events, because you just get, you know, there's nine contestants, and all these young ladies were just exemplary in their, in their scholastics and in their extracurricular activities, just their thoughts about the future, so it's pretty impressive times. Looking forward to Saturday. I'm glad I'm not a judge, because I would not want to pick the top one out of that group of nine. And then later on this afternoon, again, the chairman and I are going to meet with the California Conservation Corps, talk about some things in this area, some ideas that this board has had for a while, and just kind of follow up with them as they're in the area. And of course, Thursday and Friday, it's already been mentioned, that we'll be at the conference in Modesto with SJVRAC. And Saturday evening, before the Miss Porterville event, also Zonta is having their 100th anniversary over at Knuckles Ranch in Porterville during a celebration, so I'll be taking a proclamation from the board over to congratulate them on 100 years, and I believe it's 70 years for the, for the Porterville group, so that's about it. Thank you.
Supervisor Shucklian?
I did forget to mention, thank you. This Saturday morning, the 26th, from 8:00 to noon, is Make a Difference Day. We'll be doing a lot of different projects at Moonee's Grove Park, so I encourage anybody who wants to come out and paint a bench or plant a tree or some other things that we could use your help. And then Saturday night, I want to mention that the Sheriff's Powell Program is having their fundraising barn burner event in Tipton, and I will be emceeing that. That's it.
Very good. Just to cover a few things from last week, and then some others that are upcoming, I want to thank General Services staff for helping with the Three Rivers Bathroom Groundbreaking. We had a nice little groundbreaking ceremony last Friday, and so we're looking forward to hopefully around February, where we'll have a ribbon cutting, and anyone that's interested will be welcome to check and make sure that everything flushes okay. Last Friday evening, I also attended the Tulare County Cattlemen's Dinner in Exeter. As everyone mentioned, or most people mentioned, the TCAG Board Meeting yesterday, and two things I just wanted to note that of significance for the county is, one, the Transportation Authority moved forward with bonding, with investigating bonding against future measure R funds, which means that the action that this board took last Tuesday night will, more than likely, will be able to move forward with our farm-to-market routes, and so that's very positive, along with many other regional projects. One of the regional projects that was highlighted is finishing up the Caldwell-Vicelia Road, Avenue 280 corridor, and making that four lanes. Now, there's still going to be some elements that won't quite get completed, I don't think, but it, but there's going to be significant progress on that as far as what the bonding will help. There was a lot of other projects as well in other jurisdictions, but those are a couple that I wanted to highlight. And then the other significant action is that we took as a TCAG Board to file, to authorize filing our own application before the California Transportation Commission to get the ITIP Grants, the interregional program dollars that the state, that Caltrans initially planned to take away from us. So we're planning on submitting our own application to get those funds back into the final budget that will be determined in December, and we, and we haven't ever done, done that, very few agencies have, but it looks very promising that we can get the environmental dollars and some of the other engineering costs for expanding 99 through the city of Tulare. So that's very positive. As Dennis mentioned, today, we're going to be meeting with the California Conservation Corps, and, and last week, we met with our Sequoia National Forest Supervisor, and those were very positive meetings, or the one was very positive. I'm anticipating we're going to have another positive meeting today, and just, again, continuing to find ways to partner with our federal counterparts to make sure that we have a healthy forest. Ms. Benson was very complimentary of our fire chief, Chief Norman. She said multiple times how it was a great partnership, and she really appreciated the work that, that the fire department had done and others as far as making sure that we have ingress and egress routes that were cleared of hazard trees, and so they're, they're looking forward to doing additional projects, and, and we did a lot of, it was a great brainstorming session where we talked about lots of different ways that we might be able to help and assist and get projects moving quicker and in larger scale, so it's, I was, I was, I was very happy, very pleased with, with the meeting. This, this upcoming week, as we said, the San Joaquin Valley Regional Association of California Counties is meeting in Modesto. Next week, I've got a meeting with the City of Farmersville and Habitat for Humanity, and Habitat's interested in doing a project in Farmersville, so I think that's very positive. I don't, we're not really sure as far as the scope and the size, but just trying to have a preliminary meeting to see about doing a project there. And East Coia Groundwater Sustainability Agency is also meeting later that afternoon that I'll be attending on next Monday. We have next week, meetings with the Tulie Tribe, Supervisor Townsend and myself. On the 31st, the Yosemite-Sequoia RC&amp;D Meeting will be meeting. It's a forest health program or, or group that covers Mariposa through Tulare County and the three counties in between. That's in Clovis. On the 1st, we're going to be having, I think, unless somebody tells me wrong, we're going to be having our pilot program for the few departments that signed up for Bring Your Pets to Work Day. So, you know, assuming Red's all right, he's going to be, you know, romping around, and there's no water in the creek, so that's positive. He won't, he won't jump in this time. Well, he might jump in, but he's not going to be all wet, so that should be a good, a good day, just trying to test it out and see how we can, you know, increase employee morale without having to cause any major issue, and, you know, it's, it's the day after Halloween, so why not? And then on the 4th, the only other meeting is that we have a San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority meeting, and we're going to be discussing some of the forest health issues that we've been looking at as far as from a watershed standpoint, as well as getting an update on Temperance Flat. I did see an update this morning on the Temperance Flat effort from the new JPA, and they are hoping to have by the end of the year, all the operational agreements between the various entities that are involved, SoFryant, the exchange contractors, City of Fresno, and then Westlands and San Luis Delta Mendota. They're not officially a part of it, but they are still in talks as far as how the operational agreement will go. So with that, we'll go into Item 2, Present a Proclamation Recognizing October as Cybersecurity Awareness Month in Tulare County. I said that earlier, and Peg gave me the death stare, so.
So, good morning, Chairman Crocker, members of the board, Mr. Hess, Ms. Peterson. My name's Kenny Cassan, and I'm the Assistant Director of the Information and Communications Technology Department here in Tulare County, and I really appreciate the recognition of October as Cybersecurity Awareness Month by the board. I'd like to address the board briefly to help punctuate the importance of protecting our residents' data here in Tulare County. Today, most, if not all, of our personal and professional lives are deeply intertwined with technology and electronic data. We rely on technology to conduct many of our daily activities, from the very trivial to the very vital. Things like sending a text message, ordering a pizza, or buying a home, enrolling in open enrollment, coordinating services for at-risk youth who may be in life-or-death situations. From our medical records to our credit scores to the potentially very private details of the services that our residents receive from their county government agencies, all of these pieces of information are contained within the electronic systems that are managed by this county. In the spring of 2017, The Economist Magazine announced that data had replaced oil as the most valuable commodity in the world. So then it stands to reason that the world is seeing a massive influx of cybercriminals and organizations dedicated to stealing that data. The cost associated with protecting, and in some unfortunate cases, recovering after a loss of that data is doubling year over year. So gone are the days where the concept of security through obscurity had any real-world benefit. You would think that here in Tulare County nestled between some of the technological superpowers like Los Angeles and the Bay Area, that we would be able to live in relative obscurity to the world, but in fact, that profile actually makes us a higher target on those cybercriminals lists. Crime syndicates and nation-state sponsored hacking groups of the world are looking for targets like Tulare County, because the quality of the data that we are collecting from our citizens and residents is just as high as everywhere else in those highly populated areas, but their assumption is, is that we are less savvy and less prepared to defend against their attacks and their tools. So, local governments are ideal targets for cybercriminals, because we have lots of valuable data on individuals, financial transactions, technology, and infrastructure that they can As our interconnectivity expands and technology advances, we push more workloads into the cloud, and that, and as we're modernizing the way we do business, the cyber threat landscape also evolves. Today, the top cyber threats facing our local government include phishing, ransomware, website vulnerabilities, malware, and inadvertent insider threats. This slide details some of the real-world costs. Every, just recently, all of this data has been collected within the last 12 months, and I won't read down every single bullet point, but some of the highlights that I'd like to point out are that in public administration organizations, one out of approximately every 300 emails that are received by our email system contain a malicious payload, and that 92.5% of malware attacks are being sent through email. Ransomware attacks targeting state and local governments here in the United States increased 65% since, just since last year, and there have been 140 successful malware ransomware attacks reported in, just in the first 10 months of 2019. So, what can we do? We can educate and make people aware, and, and that's, that's the reason why the Department of Homeland Security has designated October as Cybersecurity Awareness Month. I appreciate the board's attention on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken, if you want to come on up, I got a, we'll read the proclamation. Come back here. This is a proclamation recognizing October 2019 as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month in Tulare County, whereas the County of Tulare recognizes that it has a vital role in identifying, protecting, and responding to cyber threats that may have significant impact to our individual and collective security and privacy, and whereas critical infrastructure sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems, and whereas the National Institute of Standards and Technology Cybersecurity Framework and DHS's Critical Infrastructure Cyber Community, C3, voluntary program have been developed as free resources to help organizations, large and small, both public and private, implement the cybersecurity framework and improve their cyber practices through a practical approach to addressing evolving threats and challenges, and whereas in support of the cybersecurity framework and to better assist business and government entities in addressing cyber threats, the Center for Internet Security, Multi-State, ISAC, the Council on Cybersecurity, the Governor's Homeland Security Advisors Council, and public and private sector entities have developed an effort to promote good cyber hygiene through actionable guidance for government and businesses, and to promote innovation, strengthen cybersecurity investment, and enhance resilience across all sectors, and whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role to play, and awareness of computer security essentials will improve the security of Tulare County information infrastructure and economy, and whereas all citizens are encouraged to visit these sites to learn about cybersecurity and put that knowledge into practice in their homes, schools, workplaces, and businesses. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize the month of October 2019 as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Signed, October 22nd, 2019, Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpool, Amy Shucklian, Eddie Valero, and Dennis Townsend. Thank you. Yeah, it is. I just mentioned that cybersecurity, we've seen that last year, I think it was Imperial County had a major attack on their county infrastructure and shut down certain aspects of them for at least two months, and we know of other local agencies that were impacted recently that, from some of our neighbors and smaller departments, and so it's, it's something that's very real, something that happens on a regular basis. It's not just some existential threat that we don't really, that we just create a proclamation. So it's, you know, be aware. I appreciate any efforts as far as bringing awareness and trying to, you know, communicate that to our departments, because none of us want to have to go through the expense of, of any of those type of attacks and resolving those issues, so thank you. Any other comments? See, we'll go to public comments, Item 3. I believe we, Mr. Washam has some.
(inaudible) cards?
Yeah. Please state your name and address for the record, and also so we can send people that are concerned about short-term rentals.
Good morning, Chairman Crocker, Acting CAO Hess, and County Counsel, and Chief Clerk, Mike Washam R.M.A. And I just wanted to touch on a couple of things, there's just two items. If you could go ahead and flip this up. I just wanted to expound a little bit on the open house for the Tipton Medical Clinic. Just wanted to say that, you know, R.M.A.'s worked closely with them developing this, but I just wanted to say that a few years ago, your board vacated a small section of East Lipscomb that was bisected by Highway 99 during the construction of, of the state route. So we have, the county owner has a small little section of, pretty much a useless piece of property, that your board vacated a few years ago, and that county vacation is what provided the ability for this facility to expand. It's, it's, it's... that your board vacated a few years ago, and that county vacation is what provided the ability for this facility to expand its, its, its facilities and ability to serve the Tipton community. So it's even what might seem like a very small action on the board can have significant positive impacts to the people living and working in the county, and I just wanted to kind of put that out there. The other thing I have is a short video, it's about six minutes long. I know that we're going to be talking about Sequoia Field in, in the untimed items. This might be like considered a prologue for that. This was made in conjunction with the new facility that's going in there as preservation, for historical preservation of, of the history of Sequoia Field. So with that, I will get this going if it will.
In the heart of Tulare County lies Sequoia Field, a historic airfield that was vital to our country's triumph in World War II. Join us as we look back on the special place in the history of Tulare County.
Sequoia Field is very intimately tied to the history of World War II. It was established as a primary pilot training facility by the US Army Air Force. This provided a lot of local employment. I mean, they were, they were critical not only to the operation of the field itself, but also in the stimulation they gave to the local economy.
The facilities at Sequoia Field included two hangars, a control tower, parking for aircraft training, cadet barracks, and an administration building.
The older facilities were kind of an interesting, almost square-shaped, kind of four Ts running out from a central point.
On the eve of World War II, the Army did not have any training facilities for pilots. Civilians who knew how to fly started schools to train our future fighter pilots. Sequoia Field was a civilian airfield that was contracted by the US Army Air Force. Among its early instructors was one of the owners, Gladys O'Donnell.
She had actually been in a competition with the famous Amelia Earhart. Civilian schools were badly needed. Everybody was on edge. The base was established in October 1941, two months before Pearl Harbor. And with the attack on Pearl Harbor, there was mass panic, bordering on hysteria. They could see that they were going to need thousands of Air Force pilots.
Sequoia Field was one of two such bases in the county. The other was Rankin Airfield to the south. Tulare was the only county in California that had two pilot training schools.
Well, the training involved a combination of classroom instruction and actual in-flight training. It took place over a 10-week period.
8,000 young men got their first flying lessons at Sequoia Field. At peak training, 700 cadets were in rotation at once. Yearbooks show some of the colorful nicknames used for cadets. The symbol for Sequoia Field was a dodo bird that has grown a set of eagle's wings. Early cadets were known as dodos.
When they first came in, because they were flightless, they were referred to them as dodos. But as they went through the training, they would sprout the wings.
One distinguished graduate of Sequoia Field was Daryl Lindsey. Lindsey's plane was struck during a mission over Europe. He held the aircraft steady long enough for his entire crew to bail out, but the plane exploded before he could eject. The Lindsey Air Station, a US Army and Air Force base in Germany which was used during the Berlin airlift, is named after the captain who got his wings at Sequoia Field. The aeronautic school closed in 1944. From 1948 to 1970, the barracks were used as an old-age home run by the county. The hangars and runway were still used by private aircraft.
Tulare County has a lot of programs going on in and around Sequoia Field at any given time. The former barracks and training ground are in use by the Tulare County Sheriff's Department.
In fact, everything we, we grow and do is for the kitchen, for the inmates. We feed the inmates. And as taxpayers, you don't have to pay for it, feed them. It eliminates a lot of the cost. We're a cow-calf operation. We're an 80-sal swine operation. We have 10-acre garden, our own greenhouse.
Sheriff got the idea, he, why don't we have our own chickens and raise our own eggs? Now we save the kitchen $100,000 a year off of just that one item, eggs. So we're extremely happy about that job.
In plans for the future of Sequoia Field, Tulare County hopes to find a way to blend the past with the present.
The county is working with the state to convert the old barracks and part of the classrooms into a new detention facility.
The hangars on Sequoia Field will be preserved, and new users will have a chance to experience the thrill of flying over Tulare County.
We currently and recently entered into a lease with a group that does what is called power paragliding.
In 1997, Bruce Baird, a graduate of the school, organized a reunion of pilots who had trained at Tulare's two aeronautic schools, Sequoia Field and Rankin. Former fighter pilots assembled from around the country.
I was involved in a lot of the parking, and that, that tarmac was packed with personal planes that were flying in for them. And they were probably 450, 500 people here at that time.
In recent years, we have lost many of the great pilots who learned to fly in Tulare County during World War II. At the entrance to the airport is a monument to their dedication and their training.
It's lit up at night. We made a little two-car parking spot for anyone that wants to come and, you know, revisit all the pictures and so forth. That was one of the best things I've seen after they left.
So whether you're a flying enthusiast or a history buff, we can all agree that Sequoia Field is a great example of a historic place repurposed for the modern day, ensuring its history will be experienced for generations to come.
So I just wanted to share that with you. That's not the final cut. We're looking to have subtitles put in so in case this will be made available to the museum, other places that we can have that. And I'm just using that as a prologue for the presentation later. We, we had a taste of what's to come with our chief engineer, Ross Miller, so. No, he won't end up on the cutting room floor. So with that, I, that's, that's what I wanted to share with the board today, so thanks.
Very good. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent calendar, items four through 26. Item eight and 25 will be pulled off calendar. Are there any other items wishing to be pulled or commented separate consideration? Members of the board or public? Yes, members of the public, please come forward. Item 12, Francina, okay. Pull that. Any other items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for balance.
I'd like to make a move.
By Supervisor Valero, second by Supervisor Schuckley. Any further questions, comments? Please cast your votes. And the item passes 5-0. We'll now take up item 12. Approve a MOU with Blue Cross of California Partnership, talk about onsite kiosks.
Yeah. So, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Hess and Ms. Peterson. My name is Francina Martinez. I'm a Division Manager for Tulare Works for the Human Services Division, as you just approved, so thank you for that. We are adding an additional kiosk to the South Valley, to the Government Plaza Building, which is also referred to as the South Valley Government Plaza One Stop. So in the true essence of making that a one-stop, the Human Services Department and Public Health Department are actually really excited about this collaboration with Anthem to truly make this a one-stop in services, to be able to add an additional service to the community to seek health services at this location. So with that effort, the goal is to improve access to care by offering another option to those in the South County as a point of contact between the community and service providers for health services. So just a few key things about this kiosk. Some of you guys are familiar with the one that's sitting at HR&amp;D. This is basically the catalog model of that version. So in this version, it's a pod in essence. It's self-contained. It will be located in the hallway of that facility near the Tulare Works entrance. And with that, Medi-Cal Anthem users can use this kiosk for free, free of charge. Anyone that's an Anthem plan user can use it with their copay. Anyone that's uninsured or non-Anthem users can use it at a $49 charge. In addition to basic health services for general health, actually, psychology and psychiatry services will be also available with appointment services at this location. And more will be to come. We're going to be doing some more servicing and messaging through the media and such and social media in future efforts. So the kiosk will actually open to the public on the 20th of November. We're going to be having an unveiling on the 19th. The board will get a formal invite to that. If any of you would like to, to talk at that event, please feel free to let us know. We'll add you to that agenda, and we basically just wanted to make you aware of that so you could agendize that as necessary. Do you guys have any questions for us?
I used the kiosk, I liked it.
All right, well, we hope the community, that they like it as well. Basically, we know that some employees and, and many of us don't seek healthcare as we should because we get busy. And when we see people come in and say that, you know, we prioritize things in our life and pretty much we put our health to the side. So hopefully, people will take the opportunity to use this kiosk and put their health as a priority for themselves as well. So we thank you for your support. Go ahead, Mr. Valero.
Yeah, and I'd just like to say again, thank you for having a forward-thinking approach and also reducing costs and providing greater access, not only for our employees, but for others as well. So thank you.
Thank you guys for your support. Have a good morning.
Further questions, comments by members of the board or public?
Feels like it, Amy, it does. We're excited. They will actually demo it at the unveiling, so if you guys can make it out, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
How bad, how unhealthy we are. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
Move by Supervisor Townsend.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Valero. Please cast your votes. The vote passes unanimously, 5-0. Next, we'll go to our not-timed items and take up item 27, receive a presentation from R. May on Sequoia Field Airport Layout Plan. The famous, infamous, Mr. Ross Miller. What happens when you put him on camera is just.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Mr. Hess, Ms. Peterson. My name is Ross Miller. I'm a chief engineer with the Tulare County Resource Management Agency, as recently seen in that short documentary you just watched. I'm here today to talk about a subject near and dear to my heart, as well as a former headache for Mr. Hess right there, Sequoia Field Airport. Here today to talk about an updated airport layout plan, I'll explain what those are, and then I'll explain what the airport layout plan is proposed for, as well as provide just a general status update about the airport and what's going on over there. As I said, I believe this pretty much recaps everything I just said. I will also discuss a current construction project we will be undertaking soon, which we are currently bidding. I will discuss project funding for that, as well as for the airport layout plan, and talk about some other uses at the airport, though most of those were just covered by that documentary. In general, airport layout plans are, they're planning tools that are intended to depict existing and planned development at the airport. Improvements at an airport must follow what is contained within an airport layout plan. And the airport layout plan also has to show a ton of existing and invisible boundaries, mostly to, you know, succinctly capture the thousand regulations involving what is in and around the runway, takeoff area, apron, everything like that. The airport layout plan is also used to prepare the Airport Capital Improvement Program, which is an annual submission that we make to the federal government for a five-year plan and the state government for a 10-year plan. This will then determine the eligibility of grant funding going forward. We receive about $150,000 or so every year from the federal government for use in capital improvements to the airport. Most of that will fund projects at 90%. The state will then provide a match of 5% of the federals, leaving a leftover 5.5% local match. So this contains the airport layout plan, and as I said, there is a lot of invisible boundaries that are shown. The runway, and just for reference, north would kind of be going from the bottom right to the top left of the sheet. It's tilted to show the runway. The current runway is kind of towards the top of this document. It's rotated about 130 degrees from due, due east, which is why it's called Runway 13 and Runway 31. Official airport boundary actually extends about 100 feet north of the existing fence line into some of the other farming operations. Most of this is land that is not currently needed for airport, though there will be a weather observation station that will be placed up there as part of the current project, which I will discuss more in a moment. The current farming operations on the airport occur kind of towards the top and various points around the airport. They have to avoid the, the blue rectangle shown there, which is the runway object-free area because that has to maintain hard ground for planes that may run off the runway. And the idea is that the planes don't flip or become destroyed. The current project we want to undertake will be the installation of an AWAS, an Automated Weather Observation System. If you've ever watched the news and wonder why they're always reporting about the weather at airports, it's because there's devices at the airports that continuously broadcast weather updates. These prove very valuable, and many of them have been running for over 100 years throughout the country, so this will add this to the vast network of these stations throughout the country. We're also adding what are called runway end indicator lights. These are little flashing lights that will be offset a little from the end of each side of the runway. Basically, it's a large flashing light indicating to pilots, this is where the end of the runway is. There's 1,000 other lights, but these are the important ones. There will also be what's called a PAPI, a Precision Approach Path Indicator. This is a series of four lights, and depending on your angle, will show as either red or white. So they're adjusted, so pilots that are correctly approaching the airport will see two red, white, red lights and two white lights. If you're too high, you'll see more red. If you're too low, you'll see more, or sorry, if you're too high, you'll see more white, and if you're too low, you'll see more red. The airport layout plan also includes some future hangars. The large yellow area towards the center will be future paving for additional airport parking. The existing hangars are shown in green, as well as three smaller T-hangers right there. The area here, which is currently a drainage swale, will be replaced by hangars in the future. And some of these projects that I'm talking about are, you know, short-term, a couple of years. Some of these are potentially decades out, so these documents take a lot of care and precision to forecast what will be going on for many, many years to come. One of the most important changes as well will be the entrances and exits. Between the parallel taxiway and the runway will have to be modified. Currently, we have three, or five entrances and exits, two of which are kind of historic, but which do not meet FAA standards involving being 90 degrees from the runway, as well as providing direct access from the apron. So the FAA is going to require, as part of one of our future capital projects, to remove the two non-conforming entrances and exits. What I have here is a copy of the Capital Improvement Program that was submitted last year. This shows that the next project coming up, and this will probably be pushed to 2020 because of the current navigation aid project being undergoing. So we'll rehab the runway, as well as the entrances and exits. After that, we will have to rehabilitate the parallel taxiway, and then we will rehabilitate the aprons and taxi lanes. Finally, we are adding a fuel island after that, as well as nested T-hanger buildings. The fuel island and T-hangers are considered non-essential uses. Anything that could generate revenue for the airport unfortunately is of the lowest priority. The FAA prioritizes anything that's. priority. The FAA prioritizes anything that's safety or anything that's focused on the operations of the airport. So we've had, at the four and five-year mark, the fuel island project for probably the last 15 years. So they are perpetually five years out. We hope, though, that upon completion of these other projects, we will be in a position to finally build one of these projects, after which we have to make sure there are no other aviation necessities for three years in order to comply with some other FAA funding guidelines. So I mentioned we have a navigation aids project. This had been originally bid in 2017, but due to a conflict between the local FAA office, which had approved the plans and specifications we had prepared, and the national office, which took issue with the bidding of one of the items, which was LED lights for the PAPI system. The bid had to be rejected because the national office won, after which we then went through a separate procurement process to get the LED lights, which we have, we got a month or two ago, and now the project is currently being rebid. I believe as we speak, there is a job walk going on. I kind of mentioned that there are the three systems going on, the Precision Approach Path Indicator, the runway indicator lights, and the Automated Web Weather Observation System. As prepared, there is an option which the county could decide, or your board could decide to award if it comes in at as a cost-effective manner. The system, as specified, would detect and report wind speed and direction, ambient temperature, dew point pressure, visibility, and precipitation. The ADAL alternate system would also report the weather ceiling and visibility. The ADAL would be important if the county wants to try to draw additional plane traffic in the event of weather upsets at other nearby airports, as well as to potentially try to draw in future commercial uses at the airport. So, as mentioned, the bidding had been reauthorized in 2017. It took us about two years to get worked out the procurement issue on those lights, which has happened. The advertisement went out on the 8th. We've worked to schedule a bid opening for the 31st, and we hope at the December meeting to submit the request for award. Construction of the project will take approximately six months, though most of that will be procurement time. The airport layout project cost about, was about $100,000, $100,000 project, of which, as I mentioned, the FAA would provide 90% of funding. That happened, so they provided $90,000. The state will match the FAA's funding at 5%, so they provide 4.5% of the total project, just to make everything confusing. And they provided $4,500 for that, and the local match was $5,500, budgeted several years ago and previously spent, I believe. The navigation aids project, based on the previous bid, was awarded at, or the grant was awarded by FAA at $359,766, which is about a $400,000 project total. I believe it's $399,700 or something. The state took about a year to get their matching grant as well, and they will be providing it at about $18,000. So the local match, as was budgeted and approved, was about $22,000, and there is the ADAL option for about $25,000. So we wanted to talk about some of the other uses at the airport. The video covered pretty well the farming operations that are going on there. There's a lot of emergency storage that is happening in the form of sandbags and other staging for flood events. And on the bottom left, you can see someone taking off on the power paragliding, which you can tell looks kind of like a giant fan strapped to your back with a parachute. They're starting a school there. It's pretty awesome. I would recommend it. I haven't tried it, but I really want to. There's a school there, so you can contact them. They're called Vortex Power Paragliding. And the top, there was a large meetup of power paragliders from all over the state that came down. It was about 50 people. They were trying to keep it smaller in its first year, and they plan to grow it in future years. But the top shows that gathering. So the request today were to receive your presentation, to approve the draft of the airport layout plan as presented, and to authorize the chairman to sign the necessary sheets on the airport layout plan. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
Questions from members of the board? Supervisor Townsend.
How, Ross, how long does the ALP approval last?
It's indefinite by nature, but the FAA says that there are certain factors if various conditions are met. But usually, they consider it around three to five years. We started this process about five years ago, but dealing with the FAA and the navigation aid project issue kind of extended the approval of this from when it was supposed to be approved around 2015 or 16 to now.
Okay, all right. So we're still, and then with the AWAS 3 ADAL, that's something we were going to wait for bids to come in, see what it actually came in, and then decide whether or not to go with that. Is that the idea?
Correct. As planned, it was an ADAL, so we will get the bids, and then we will get an alternate bid that has that as a replacement for the other system, at which point in time, if not too expensive, the board could decide to award.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments by members of, Supervisor Shackleton?
Look at your screen.
As I turned, I saw.
First of all, I think it's a great plan. I think the video is good. I think it's very important to preserve and get our history out there. Question, there was a quick glimpse in the video, and I've been asked this a few times by folks regarding the memorial marker that's out front. Is there any plans for, to spruce it up, restore it, or anything of the sort? And I know it might not be part of the airport plan. I'm just throwing it in.
I can't answer that offhand. I can meet with General Services. I'm not aware which agency is actually currently responsible for maintaining that either. So I can meet with them and we can work on it.
That might be why it's not being maintained. So, okay, thank you.
Supervisor Randapool?
Quick question about the fueling station. How far out do you think that is? I mean, because that's really the main infrastructure piece that kind of prevents that airport from really being an airport and being used more frequently by air traffic, correct?
That would be, it's...
Partially correct. I mean, there's probably some other things that enhance the safety and the lighting, you know. I know they all contribute, but if you don't have fuel out of sight, there's really not much of a reason to go there unless you're looking for a place to park.
Correct, though our actual consultant that prepared the plan believes that the additional hangar space would be more valuable than the fuel island.
Really?
But others, including past administrations, believe the fuel island was more necessary. I can see either way, and based on the preferences of previous administrations, I'm keeping the fuel island as the higher priority. We're hoping this time may actually be the five-year mark, if we can get the rehabilitation of all of the pavement done.
Sure.
It was creeping up and was about ready, but because of the number of years that have passed and just annual degradation of the pavement, it's, those projects had to get bumped forward. So pending any new regulation, it may actually be five to six years out.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Washam?
If I may, for just a comment on the fueling. The federal funding, when we accept the federal grants, we're looking at a 20-year commitment to maintain and operate the airport. The funding for the fueling is looked at as a capstone. That's, it's not, so once we go for funding for the fueling, then we're not open for additional grants going forward until the...
It's three years.
Is it three years before? So, but, so we're making those commitments. And I would agree that for the recreational flyer, the people that go out on weekend flights, yeah, fueling is a big thing. Oftentimes, you discount the fuel and you're not making necessarily profit on the fuel, but that is enticing them, just like you look for the lowest-priced gas when you're driving around. Pilots will look for the lowest fueling, and then they'll make a stop specifically on that. So you can add other things to the site potentially, and there's no plans here yet, but, you know, a potential coffee shop flying in for breakfast type of thing. And we do have the jail facilities nearby, so you have some work, people there getting off shifts, on shifts. So maybe something like that could fly in the, excuse the pun, fly in the future, you know, some sort of a cafe or breakfast thing. So deputies, when they're coming off shift or going on shift, as well as maybe potentially some commercial recreational pilots. So that would be the long-term scope of that.
Thank you for mentioning that. I'm sorry for interruption, because that's one of the questions that I was going to ask, is what do you anticipate as attracting new business, as mentioned in our item report? And so you touched on that, and I know I've frequented Runway Cafe in Woodlake multiple times. And so I'm just thinking about what will this do to the local area as its impact?
Yeah, that's exactly the type of thing that you'd be looking for, is something similar to that. Again, it's a market rate based for the T-hangers. There's sites that are available at Porterville as well as Woodlake. So it is market-based as far as where people want to store their aircraft. So we don't have opportunity right now to lease out small ones. We do lease out the larger hangars on a per area to, multiple planes can stay in the large hangars, and we rent those out. And I believe there's three personal T-hangers on site right now.
Correct.
So looking at having T-hangers would provide the opportunity to expand that. But if you look at like Visalia Airport, some of those hangars are being utilized for other things other than aeronautical purposes. And when you take the grants, they have to be focused primarily on aircraft and those types of related concerns. So, you know, it's like you build too many, you might not be able to get the, what you need. So it's before we accept a lot of funding for those T-hangers and the fuel, we need to make a very determined study to see whether it's appropriate or not to spend that.
If I may, build off Mr. Washam. He is correct. There is a essentially 20-year commitment to continue to operate the airport as an airport upon receiving federal funds. We're currently in the process of this project, as well as closing out the ALP. So we are currently obligated for 20 years of operation. There are, you know, funds that Caltrans provides, $10,000 a year to operate an airport, but it's not adequate to fully fund the airport.
Since you're not done with the video, something you might want to add. I don't know if you recall, a few years ago, Harrison Ford crashed an airplane on a golf course, and it actually, on the plane, said Sequoia Field. It was a, some type of a recruit plane.
It was a training plane with the Dodo bird insignia on it. So that plane had been stationed at Sequoia Field.
And it said Sequoia Field on the plane, yeah.
Will recommend it.
Why not do this?
Just one last thing, too. I just want to echo Supervisor Shackleton's comment earlier about the monument. I just think that that is something that is very important, and especially as we continue to look at the maintenance and just the overall project, that that would be included as well. So thank you, Shackleton, for mentioning that.
Just to follow up on that a little bit, yeah, the purpose of creating the video was because of the new facilities going in there, this is part of the secret process of preserving the historical piece. So if there's plaques or things like that can be associated with the site that's being converted, that would be part of that through the construction, the GSA, as they build that project. I doubt that would be included in that.
Yeah, so there was, with the new facility, that part of the requirements were to honor the historical legacy of the airport by providing materials and some type of onsite memorial and educational piece, correct? I just want to, I appreciate staff working on this. I know that the FAA, that the matching requirements are very lucrative as far as there's a minimal local match, and so I appreciate that. And I'm very supportive of continuing with those. But if, for whatever reason, in the future, that the match requirement becomes more, I think that that's something that we need to evaluate, just because it's not, we've got a lot of priorities, and I'm not, you know, having an airport for some hobbyists or something. If the match requirements become 50/50, I mean, I, you know, I don't know that that really makes as much sense compared to everything else. But I don't have any issue with this.
Certainly, the leveraging of funds is greatly in our favor at this point, but that's why we wanted to talk about the ongoing maintenance of the operations. We're not covered completely year to year, so.
Very good. This is an action item. If there's no further public comment or comments from the board. Move by Supervisor Shackleton?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Townsend. Please cast your votes. And the vote is unanimous, five zero. Take up item 28, request from General Services Agency to direct staff to apply for grant funding, the California Department of Parks and Recreation.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Hess, Ms. Peterson, Brooke Sisk, General Services Agency Assistant Director. And today, we're requesting authorization to apply for per capita grant funding from the California Department of Parks and Recreation. This funding is not competitive, and if we apply, the allocation we will receive is based on population, and the minimum possible amount is $400,000. Like many grant opportunities, the funding is not restricted to parks serving severely disadvantaged communities, which is, for this grant, based on median household income, excuse me. However, if used for a park in an area not considered severely disadvantaged, a 20% match is required. Of our 11 county parks, five are considered severely disadvantaged, and that includes Alpa, Goshen, Leadbetter, Pixley, and Woodville. And six are not severely disadvantaged, and that is Balch, Bartlett, Cutler, Kings River, Mooney, and West Main. A specific park and project do not need to be identified on the application, and we really can't finalize that until we know how much money we're going to receive. The Parks Advisory Committee will begin discussing project options and hear public input at their meeting this Thursday. Because we don't often have the opportunity to utilize grant funding at the six parks not considered severely disadvantaged, staff recommends considering one of those parks for a project and utilizing funds available in the Parks Capital Improvement Fund for match. Projects must be for recreational purposes, and also, unlike other grant funds, may be used to improve the condition of existing infrastructure. So one possible project we've discussed at Mooney Grove Park would be to improve the banking around the pond, repair and install new cement around the pond, and from the surrounding four arbors, and improve arbors. This project would include several key recreational elements that are outlined in the grant guidelines, including walking paths and group picnic and gathering spaces. It would also facilitate better accessibility to the pond for fishing, which has become a very popular activity at the park in the last couple of years. Staff will return to the board for direction before submitting the final grant application, which will include the identified park and project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, members of the board? Everyone's jumping.
Oh, boy.
Supervisor Valero.
All right. So a quick question, and I'm okay in terms of the support for a park, one of the six parks. But is there any way to go out for the grant to kind of identify several of those parks for improvement, or are we just focused on one?
So, yes. Actually, in the past, in 2005, we used the funding. We got $1.2 million, and we did bathroom remodels at Bartlett, Cutler, Kings River, Mooney, Pixley, and Woodville, as well as a skate park at Leadbetter. So I think that will depend on how much funding we get. So the greater amount of funding, the more possibility that it could be used at multiple parks or to do larger projects.
And did you say the minimum was $400,000?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
That was actually my question, too, so.
Very good.
Answered.
Supervisor Shackleton?
Typically, I'm not a big fan of grants, especially for parks, because of the ongoing maintenance. And this is unique in that it is, it can be used for maintenance items, one-time things. I know a city in our county recently received a very large grant to build a park, and, you know, we always have to be careful when we... know, we always have to be careful when we receive these grants, you know, how long, you know, is it going to last? So I'm very supportive of us going out and deciding at the time that we get the award where, you know, where exactly we're going to use it, and put that also to task to the Park Advisory Committee, too.
Thank you.
Very good. Supervisor Randapool.
All right, Mr. Shuck. You know, I think that we obviously want to support this effort. How many grant programs are there to where if you have a certain population and you submit, you're going to get, and you're guaranteed to get a minimum amount? I love the fact it's non-competitive, but we can get this grant money. Yes, there are ongoing maintenance issues that can be created, but I see this as a real opportunity to enhance an asset that the county owns, and typically has to look to general funding for support. So I'm very supportive of this, and I know that the focus of the Parks Advisory Committee and of the General Services Agency is to, so to speak, spread the love, and I hope that we can improve the infrastructure, not only in Moonee Grove Park, but many of the other typically not often thought-of parks. I would like to see us focused on this, while.
Thank you.
Supervisor Valero.
Well, as I've been holding town hall meetings throughout my district, the one thing that always comes up is more green space or more parks, and so I know that this isn't for adding additional, which is fine, but I just, again, there's been this increased attention on parks lately, and so, again, thank you for reaching out and trying to obtain these funds to improve and update the ones that we already have.
Thank you.
Just some of my two thoughts is, one, I think it's great, let's go for it, echo the comments that my colleagues have already stated, and then I think you're probably already doing that, but along the lines of spreading the love around maybe some parks that haven't received some, you know, large investments recently. I know Woodville, we've just gone through and planted a lot of trees and upgraded irrigation, Leadbetter, there's been a lot of investments there, even Balch with the electrical. And so there's, you know, there's been Goshen, I think we applied for a competitive grant not too long ago for Goshen. So there's been a lot of investments in those parks, and, you know, recognizing that there's other parks that, you know, the focus should be that. Moonee, I would say that that doesn't really, I wouldn't count that as part, we have made major investments to Moonee, but again, since it is a showcase and that we, you know, I'd be very supportive of continuing to help out with that effort. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Would move approval of the item?
Move by Supervisor Shucklian, second by Supervisor Valero. Please cast your votes. And the vote is 5-0 in support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go to item 29, board member requests. Board members may make a referral to staff to have staff place a matter of business on a future agenda. Is there any items that any member of the board would like to present?
Supervisor Townsend.
Yeah, I have one. In some of the town halls, and even in Ivanhoe at our, in our board meeting, there's been a lot of discussion about noise complaints, things going on. Some of the conversation is about, say, party barns that are operating illegally, not under a use permit. Some are just about neighbors just having, having a lot of noise going on. I think I would like to see us look into adding a noise ordinance, that we could have something that we could codify that the, whenever there is an issue, that we could have, have something that's objective, we could just look at it and say, yeah, this is, it is, it is an infraction, so that we could take action on it. So if we could maybe follow up with some studies on noise ordinances.
Okay. Any other requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, Madam Counselor, we have a need for a closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item C is off-calendar. Items A and B will be heard in closed session, but I do not expect any announcements out.
Very good. This meeting is adjourned.